Intern did it.
Justin, do you want hard copies?
Um, yes.
We have some.
Yep.
We're live.
Yeah, look at that.
Mayor, do you want?
How that is, numbers there.
Same ones.
Okay.
It's bigger.
These are the same ones.
Look how the names are.
Amy.
This is the operating budget.
Tell me I don't look like an intern did that. Where do you sign? Where does he sign? That looks like. Yeah. I could done better than that. That's why I said the river runs backwards sometimes.
So the big ones, the operating budget, and the small ones, the capital.
Okay, I'd like to call order the USB work session for June the sixteenth at ten AM. Could I get a roll call, Mr. Fettie?
Yeah, we got board member Tony Abbott here. Board member Justin Opert.
Sir.
Board member Tommy Rallett.
President.
Board member Lenny Fryman.
Here.
We got board member Brett Bondurant absent. We got city attorney Dale Wilton.
Yeah.
We got utility director Billy Kennett.
Here.
We got president Kelly Milan.
Here.
And myself.
Okay, today, I think we're just here to talk about the capital projects for LMU primarily. And then to also maybe discuss potentially if we have to maybe go forward with some of these projects. We may have to to bond it and make talk about that process a little bit, too. So I'll let you take it off.
Okay. Okay. So just to lay a little bit of groundwork and to start off to apologize because normally we try to present this to you earlier in the year. When we went through this process, Kelly had mentioned, hey, you know, why don't we look at bonding some of these things so we can get it done? And where we're at with this, especially on the water and sewer, on the electric side from a cash flow standpoint, we're very good, we're very solid. But we all know we've been hoarding money for water and sewer and we've been putting off projects. We're we're very, we're in very good shape, so we're not, from a cash flow standpoint, just because we've been hoarding that money. But what's happened is we've deferred projects for a long time in water and sewer, and it's catching up to us. Lift stations need to be rebuilt, they're falling apart, water mains are leaking. You know, they're they're falling apart, we've isolated sections. So one of the things, you know, I, it was my goal, you know, we don't have any debt right now as far as LMU. It was my goal to leave here as utility director with no debt. But I'm also smart enough to realize that if you keep pushing these projects off like this, it's going to catch up to you. And we're at the point now where it's caught up to us. So when Kelly said, you know, why don't we look at bonding these? You know, my first thing was, no, you know, we're not going to go into debt. But then the more I thought about it, I thought, he's right, you know. It's, we're spending money fixing all this stuff, but we're putting Band-Aids on it and we just need to address them. So that's the, so the original capital sheets that I had together, you know, Kelly said, if we was to bond money and and the the timing's right on the bond because we're doing the rate study and they can fill the cost of the bonds into the rate study so that we can recoup. So the timing on this is is very good as far as pulling out from the bonds as well. So Kelly said, yeah, so let me step back. When I took this to Kelly, I said, look, we're hoarding cash, the original capital fund for water and sewer. I said, we're hoarding cash, but this is catching up to us and we are really getting to the point where we're not in good shape anymore. And I said, you know, we we don't have any choice but to wait for the rates to fund these projects so that we can get them done. And, you know, you're looking at two or three years before we have enough money in the capital funds to be able to afford to to do what we need to do. And that's when Kelly said, let's look at the bonds. Tell me what it would look like, what these capital sheets would look like if we was to bond the money. What would you want to do and how would you lay it out if you had bond money versus cash flow money from the rates? And so that's what you have in front of you is the is is those projects. Now, so again, looking at the electric, you know, we have that, we have cash and electric. And but we have a pretty aggressive year and we we're so late in the year. We went ahead and moved this out to a two thousand twenty-four capital budget. Some of this will overlay from two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four. So it's kind of a year and a half capital budget. But you can see with the the big hitter with the electric is the nine hundred thousand for the electric department office. We're still working with the engineer and Maxwell on what that's going to look like, how much the, how much that package is going to cost to to do that renovation. We we did take the meter shop out because, what was it, Kelly, like two hundred fifty thousand to?
Demo.
Demo that. So we're looking at putting a pitched roof on that to get rid of that flat roof. Once we have that, we'll put a standing seam metal roof on it. And then once we have that, we'll finish off the inside. But we'll do that with the city construction guys and our guys. We'll finish off the interior of it. But I don't want to touch that interior until we fix that roof because it's just been problems all over the years, so.
Are you talking about where Eric's office is now, the old comm line building for? Okay.
Yeah.
So you're not going to tear it down now, you're going to try to sell it?
It it was too expensive and by the time we tore it down and did all the grading and everything, it just, it was too expensive. So it it can be usable space and what I told him was, you know, we're going to put a roof on this thing. We're going to make it nice, you know, instead of, you know, right now it's just not not good, especially that back room back there. So but that's not included in that nine hundred thousand part of the project. So we're we're pretty heavy ended on the on the first year of this capital plan just because there's a lot of things we need to do. We'd like to keep that capital fund above a million dollars, but we're so aggressive with the year one that we're taking it down to five hundred twenty-one thousand. But we're okay with that because we recruit in years two, three, four, and five where we're getting it back up. You know, it almost goes to a million in after year two and then we're well above a million in years three, four, five, so.
Provided you don't have any major issues come up.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So normally I try to keep that above a million, but but, you know, we dipped it down to five hundred thousand here in year one just because there's a lot of things that, you know, we want to get done as a part of that. But that that nine hundred thousand for the electric department office is the big hit for the year. Any questions on the electric?
The electric department office is what we've kind of been talking about building out over there where they, in the in the garage. I mean, how?
Yeah.
I guess some of it isn't, as far as justification for doing that whole project. Because are there, the office thing you, for LMU happens here. I mean, but I know that there's some, maybe some administration that happens there, but most of the time they're out in the field. So are we talking about area to kick their boots off? Break room, I mean.
I'll let Billy explain, but yeah, it's 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 just, it's really just necessary space for them.
Yeah, so we have a office for Eric. There's another office in there for future. We have a conference room and then there's a big open area that's like a break room, kitchen type area. And then we have a locker room, actually two locker rooms. We was going to take out the women's locker room, but they, the engineers wouldn't let us do that. So we kept a small women's locker room and then we got a, you know, I think there was enough in there for eight lockers in the in the locker room. So it's a shower room, locker room. Right now, they're still in the data center with all that, with all their lockers and everything. So it and they're sitting on picnic tables, you know, doing paperwork and stuff like that. So what we plan to do is where the tool or the tool crib and the storage area on the lower floor, that will become offices. We're going to extend the mezzanine out and take one bay, one of the truck bays. And so all that will be the office space. A big hitter here is we we originally had this at six hundred thousand. We bumped it up to nine hundred thousand because when the engineering was done, they told us it needed to be sprinkled. So that adds a lot of money onto it.
If we can go back to, if you're done with that, to the the GSI mapping.
Uh huh.
You, and when we did last year's twenty twenty-two, you had GSI mapping at forty thousand dollars for twenty twenty-two and then you had an additional twenty for twenty twenty-three. And now you have forty thousand for twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, so what that is.
But we didn't on the twenty twenty-two's, is there?
Yeah, so what happens is that money gets carried over. So it took a year for it to implement when we're being built.
Okay.
So what I try to do is account for that money as it comes in in that year, so.
You're not asking for an additional forty thousand. Okay, that's what I, because that's what.
It's just trying to make sure that we're watching our cash flow to make sure.
Thank you.
Justin, do you have another question?
I'm just wrestling with, you know, the mayor always say wants and needs. I mean, I think it'd be great to have this this space, but I guess one area would be, you know, if we have, if we're short on our depreciation fund, why would we spend a million dollars on a this building project instead of getting that funded first, just as a priority? And then figure out a way, I guess also, you would probably want the answer to this, but at what level of remodel is it going to not require, you know, what if we scaled it down enough that it wouldn't require it to be sprinkled? Occupancy now because we have offices in it? Is, you know, or is it because we have two offices and a and a break room that we have to have it sprinkled? I mean, it just seems to be a lot additional and another three hundred thousand dollars, you know, going toward this project that could be going toward depreciation or some of the the maintenance as you had suggested that, you know, we have a lot of stuff that's falling apart.
Yeah, I mean, we can go back and ask the engineers that question if we lessen this base, but they, but the way they talked, anything that we did in that area, since it's going to be office space, it's going to have to be sprinkled. So no matter what the square footage are, you know, it, just because of the nature of the building and what we're doing.
Right, it changes the occupancy a little bit of the how they're.
Yeah.
And is there, is there an office there now?
No.
No, they're in the comm line building next to Russell's, at their parking lot.
And so some of the things that are driving this also is they're in the basement of the data center and Bryson wants them out of there, you know, just from a security standpoint. So this this really is, it's been a need for a while. We've looked at several options. We looked at off-site location.
Yes, we did.
We couldn't come up with a good idea.
Remember that at industrial drive, we're like, mm hmm.
Is there any way we could build those offices out in the other building really nicely and have really, a couple really nice offices in that other building and then have this space just for break room, locker room?
Well, one thing to keep in mind, you know, this was part of the Veritas project. I mean, we're we're way into it.
We're real deep into it.
Engineering and everything else. I mean, we've already spent quite a bit of money. I'm not sure this is the time to maybe.
Change things.
Kind of go the other direction.
Well.
We're well into it right now.
And to your point.
Correct, Billy, that's.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I.
To your point, Mr. Fettie, that is one thing Mr. Todd has told me. Over the years, we go out and we do engineering and do all this work and then nobody does nothing and there we are. We just.
Spend all that money.
Spend all that money for nothing.
And then in three years, we look at it again.
And we spend all that money. I was very well.
My only concern is I know I've signed a lot that's.
Yeah.
No, I'm not opposed to the project. I'm just, I'm saying suddenly now a fifty percent higher than what it was. You know, we had a three hundred thousand on a six hundred thousand mark, you know, that's, you know.
Well, you're going to see that on all the projects, so you know how.
It's a lot of money, I mean, three hundred thousand.
Did you see what the water line is now?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it was one point six million or whatever and now it's two point three.
I mean, I guess it's just for me, some of it's priority, you know, you know, of, you know, depreciation fund, of deteriorated infrastructure, you know, those things. So, I mean, I absolutely prioritize our employees. I mean, they're our most valuable asset and we want to, you know, we want to do everything we can for them. It's just like that there's, where's the, you know?
Yeah, it, you know, I I feel like we have the the cash to be able to to do that. You know, we're dipping it down to five hundred thousand, but, you know, we'd like to keep it over a million, but we recover in years two, three, four, and five quickly. So from a cash flow standpoint, we're okay. I understand what you're talking about, you know, almost a million dollars to build out that. But, you know, we've looked at all kinds of options and this is the best option that we came up with. We're about a hundred thousand into it already with the engineering.
Yeah.
That's been done on it, so.
Yeah, and we, I'm telling you right now, the money we'd spent on industrial for the building, plus building that building out, we would have been.
Yeah.
Threefold there.
Yeah.
Yeah. I I again, I appreciate your thoughts, but I don't know if we need to back off this one as far as the building. I'm just, that's my point, my thoughts, I mean.
Any other questions on the electric? Okay, so moving over to the water. The the big driver on the water is the US fifty water main. That is. We're at the point right now, the reason we want to move this up, we we tried to do it in phases and and but we're at the point right now where, so what's happened is we have water mains on both sides of fifty and they have cross-sections. So we're able to, you know, there's a lot of, that's a great system, you know, to to have. What's happened is, and I don't know if I've told you guys this, but I am getting this from Andy and Garrett. They got a deal back in the day on that pipe that was installed down through there. And we're paying for that deal right now because that pipe should not be busting like it is. But when it busts and we repair it and keep it hot, it'll bust again, then it'll bust again. So once it starts busting and it's busting out the bottom, which is really weird. So we we don't know exactly, we think it's a material issue with the pipe. What we've done, because we've went back and fixed it, there there's problems with that. One is the state come in and filled a lot of it. So the last leak we had was eleven foot down and they had a hektome time fine. And it's dangerous when you're working eleven foot underground like that, that's dangerous. You got to shore everything up and that's definitely no fun to work in. But what they started doing was fixing it and then they'd be back six months or a year later fixing another spot. So they started isolating sections because everything is able to be back fed. They started isolating sections. Well, we've isolated everything that we can isolate. We can't isolate any more sections and still keep everything fed over there. So our concern about this is, the the biggest concern is fire protection because if another section of this goes out, we lose our fire protection in that area. We'll still have it, they'll have to bring tankers in, you know, the water pressure's going to drip down or drop down so much. So that that's a big concern. We know we're sitting on a problem and, you know, what we're saying is we're tired of sitting on a problem. Let's address it, let's fix it. The engineering for this project, so we're going to do it in two phases. If we had the cash flowing out of our existing money, we're just going to do it in two phases because we just can't afford to do it all at one time. If we're going to bond it, then we'll do everything at one time. The problem, and the engineering is done on this and phase one is ready to go out for bid. Phase two, there's a little bit more work that needs to be done and then it'll be ready to go out for bid. So this project is almost shovel ready to be able to do. We have a four hundred thousand dollar grant application in right now. We've submitted twice for grants and we've been turned down both times. We submitted, actually, at the end of this month is our third go around to try to get money for that. So we've been trying to to get money. The feedback we're getting from Ocre this time is a little bit more positive than what we had on the first two applications. So we're hoping to be able to, which will lessen the impact of this when we do it. So that that's really the the main driver on this.
Okay, I got a few things on that water line. First of all, everybody knows that when gaming came, they widened US fifty and that's why that pipe's so deep in the ground.
Yeah.
Because it used to land. So the, what is the pipe made out of that there's?
It's ductile iron pipe, yeah. But it's general, you know, when, so.
Yes.
When when they've.
Made in a four country.
Hard. By the time they find it, you know, because what's happening then with all that fill, it's hard to find that area. And it's it's a hole out like that, you know, when they finally find it.
What size is the main? Is it twelve inch?
I think that's an eight inch.
Eight inch?
Yeah, but I'm not positive on that. And what they've been doing is when they find those leaks, they fix it hot, you know, so they're putting a sleeve on it and.
Address it.
Stops that leak, but then the pressure builds up and pops another one, you know, it's just bad situation. The the other problem we're having down through there, we tried to get everything up in the pavement to stay away from down in that bottoms area. But there's so many utilities going down through there that I think we're going to have to stay off that pavement. So that's going to be a tough project.
Running down US fifty? Running down the middle of US fifty?
Well, I think Aurora Sewer's running, I I said go down the suicide.
Of course, Maine does.
Roars does, yes.
Yeah.
Because again, they add the state at north.
Yeah.
When they widen.
I, so we we met with the engineers this week and I was like, how about if we just run down that suicide lane and, you know, be done with it? And he's like, state will never let you do that at this point.
Is is the two million dollar price tag a a good number?
Yeah, we we just had that revised. That's one of the things that you asked us to do. We went back and and had the engineers estimate. It it's gone up significantly, but everything's gone up significantly.
So you're telling us we finally got something back from engineers and this is what the engineers are recommending?
Yeah.
Because I know we allotted money for engineering for that and engineering for the consolidations on the lift stations and we just never did hear anymore on it.
With this one, we had to get the engineering back for the grant requirement.
Gotcha.
As well, so that that pushed it a little bit.
Yeah.
The the last meeting we had with Ocre, I was I was in the meeting with with Billy and and others and it did sound a lot more positive on the four hundred thousand. The previous two, our narrative wasn't very good, is what we were told. And so then we had Serpsey was in the in the meeting with us and, you know, they write the grant. So they have a, they have a good set of marching orders from Ocre on how to write the narrative. So we think, because the rest of our scoring really was scored pretty well on on the grant when they do the scoring. They showed, they went through all the scoring with us, but the narrative sucked. And I think they, I think they corrected that. So we're we're feeling pretty positive about it. So hopefully that that two million would be one point six.
That's.
I mean, that's that's the hope. It's not a two point four in in anticipation.
On paper here.
Yeah, it's two three, yeah, yeah.
Well, I got two million on mine.
Yeah, it it went up a little bit after we got the US fifty.
No.
Went up a little? Three hundred thousand dollars? I like your paperwork better.
Yeah, I like mine, too.
I got the old one, too.
Okay, so we're at two million dollars, okay? But if we get to four hundred thousand. Okay.
Let me pass that down to you.
All right.
Okay.
There you go, buddy.
I don't want that one.
I'll do the same, we don't want to give him that, we just want to keep what he's got.
Yeah, that's based on the revised engineers estimate that we got put in.
Okay. What about, what's that? That's the next one, we're not talking about that yet. This is water main, we had to do that.
Are we are we going to bid the the BLB one, BLB ductile pipe replacement at the same time as the US fifty one?
Uh, no, that, we haven't done anything on that one yet. So and that's the same type of thing. It's that ductile iron pipe that that's running in there and but we've had problems with in the past. We know it's just a, it's a ticking waiting to happen.
Do you, do you think that's going to happen in year one?
Um.
Twenty-four?
Yeah. I think so, I, you know, we can get the engineering down on it.
What about Center Street?
That's a pretty small section of pipe. Center Street is, let's see. Yeah, Center Street is right behind the, this is part of the Liberty Theater built out. So that's the reason we bumped that up because that section of alley needs to be.
Oh, that alley, that's one of them in the alley there.
That's that's behind Liberty Theater, so.
All right.
That's the reason.
We were going to piggyback on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got you. I mean, I think what what, I mean, you've heard Billy, but I guess the the thing is, is got to, you know, the, it sounds like the water main on fifty is is a definite need, not a want, that's for sure. Got to be done. We're just chasing our tail, it sounds like, when you're, if we don't, if we don't.
Next time it happens, we're going to fight our tail off. So that's, that's our fear, you know, we don't have any more sections we can isolate. Next time it happens, you know, so we'll find the leak and fix it, you know, we'll, so we'll put a temporary Band-Aid, but we'll have to leave that hot, which means it's going to blow again. That could be six months, it could be a year, it could be three months, you know.
Well, I want to, I'm going to say this because I I I believe it, but and I hate bringing up the past all the time. And but once again, this is a an example on the water and sewer. Water and sewer has been been neglected for years and years and years and years here. And you guys probably know the same stuff I do, but electric was always sort of the, I don't know, golden child for for Olin and Mel. And the water and sewer projects always got neglected because they simply didn't know water and sewer. And and I I firmly believe that now. People had told me that in the past, but I firmly believe that now because there's no reason that water main should have been going as long as it. They should have been able to do it in phases and you wouldn't be stuck with a two point three million dollar bill right now. That's the way I feel about it, but that, I mean, I'm not a water sewer guy either, but I mean, it's just logic.
Are we going to replace it down both sides of fifty then?
Just one, just have one side. The other side.
South side?
Yeah, south side.
Okay.
Yeah.
The other side's good.
Going back on this water and sewer, though, when they started infrastructure replacement in the Gabbard administration, I'm really surprised that some of these, and you and I've had this conversation, Billy, before, about why they didn't replace some of these water lines then.
Yeah.
And, you know, just going back to them water lines, that in twenty twenty-two, you had East High Street at a hundred fifty thousand, but now you got it at three hundred on the Snerd one.
Yeah, when when was the Gabbard administration, nineties?
Started, we started an infrastructure that on that side of town, I think, and don't hold me to it, it's ninety-seven. We started tearing streets up, redoing the streets, putting, putting.
Yeah.
We were.
Right.
Under the impression that they were looking at water, sewer, anything that was underground and if it needed repair, repair it. Stormwater.
I think for the most part, it all happened, right?
That's what I thought, yeah.
But I.
I would know Andy has all the blueprints that they did it over.
Yes, that that is. So that was a great project. That was a good time and they took care of a lot of things. What I don't understand is there's sections of town, though, that they didn't.
Didn't do.
Didn't do.
Sort of like they. What I'm getting at, yes.
Pop jump.
Yeah, so now we're left to clean those up. So those sections that were done, you know, we're in good shape, but it's some of these other sections.
So that, once really we get through these three we see here in town, Elm, High, or whatever you have there.
US fifty.
And.
Yeah.
There was actually three in the city, right? Elm, High, and Center, you'll be done in the city, is what I'm thinking.
That's, that's what I'm thinking. You know, I I I sat down with Andy early on when I came on board and said, okay, what do we need to do? What, where's the problem areas? And, you know, this was, I, and to me, this is a good scenario because this is all we have that we know of right now. Not to say that something might not come up in the future, but if you look at the size of our town, the size of our system, and this is all we have, we're we're in good shape. You know, there's just, what what the problem is and what's really. You know, there, there's just, what, what the problem is and what's really exasperated this problem is our cash flow. That's, had we had cash flow, we could have done this in phases and, and we would have taken care of it. And actually, phase one would have been done already on US fifty. But we didn't have the, the cash. I, I didn't feel comfortable letting that cash go. So that's the reason we held off on these projects.
Um, I, I, I mean, this isn't a meeting, probably had to talk about it, but Mark, where's, where's that three million dollars at from the fiber?
It's still sitting on the fiber account. But, uh, as soon as all the fiber gives us this, uh, what they.
The remainder?
The remainder.
Yeah.
Then we're gonna have a meeting and figure out what we're gonna do.
Okay, after that, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Because what I'm thinking is, uh, you know. Why, why can't we take a proportion of that and do maybe this project? I, I never thought of it until right now.
Yeah.
I was thinking about that too there.
And then, and then we, and then we don't, we don't bond any part of that one. Okay. I, I don't know. I, I just food for thought.
That's good discussion. I agree with that.
What, I mean, but are we getting bond money at three percent?
We, we're, we're asking for the percentages as now. We don't know what those are. It's not three percent.
Right, so I'm just, I mean.
We won't get it at three percent.
If we're getting five to seven percent on that money, I mean, and we're, and we're only paying three percent bond money, yes, that's free money. And we would actually.
It's not three, it's not three percent. That's not what bonds are right now. I, I guarantee you it's upper, closer to five. So it may be a wash. So I, I mean, we're, we're waiting to hear back on that, Justin. It's a good question.
That is a good question.
Yeah. Because, you know, you always, if you can use free money, use free money. I, I agree with that. But, and we, and we will look at that once we get those numbers back, but, and we'll bring it to you guys. But I was just thinking, and this first time I even really thought of that, but, uh, it might be a good option for this project.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I, I mean, I, I, I agree with that, with what you're, what you're saying here. I, I'd rather not go into debt. We don't have to. But if we can make money on that money, then we.
Yeah, I agree. I, I just, you know, and, and I, I'm, I'm gonna step back. Uh, Billy was very adamant at the beginning about not going into debt. Um, I'm going back a year ago or so, probably a year and a half ago. When we had that talk, probably initially, but, uh, you know, uh, at some point, our utilities is gonna get in debt. At some point, it's gonna happen. If it's, and not during this administration, it might be the next or the next, but it's gonna happen. It just, you, you are not gonna be able to stay out of that. Uh, uh, for years. I, it's just not gonna happen.
Well, because our rates are tripled.
Well, our, our rates are low.
Yeah, they are low.
They're low. People don't think they are, but they're low. Low, and I quote me, and, and tell me if I'm wrong. But we're in the lowest third, the, we're in the, the lowest third in the state. We're, we're the, you know, if I, I don't know if I'm saying that right, but.
Yeah.
We pay some of the, a, a third, a third of the state pays, we, we pay the lowest in, in, one third of the state. And I, I, people, people don't understand that. My own wife doesn't understand that. Because I, I tell her all the time. Our utilities are cheap. I mean, really cheap. Go up here to Hidden Valley, pay a water bill. It's three times what we pay guys. Three times. I mean, it.
Well, it's easy to say that, but then when you get your electric bill and your water bill and stuff, then we're saying it's high, but maybe.
But you know why?
Yeah, you can't.
Because we've all been, uh, uh. Programmed that everything's been subsidized in the city Lawrenceburg for however long gaming's been here.
Gaming.
Twenty-seven years.
Yeah.
We've all been subsidized. That's why we, we feel that way. That's why we're in sort of the predicament we are right now in utilities. Because for years, utilities was subsidized by Riverboat. Billy would, this, this conversation ten years ago would have been, hey, I need some M D F money.
Yeah, cuz.
I, we need to go do these projects.
Yeah, cuz it's never.
Write a check.
Right, we're like. Well, so the other thing is even up to two years ago.
Yeah.
We wouldn't even be having this conversation because the city was still paying two million dollars to.
Absolutely.
Utilities. That, that's really what, a, a, and to me, we did the right thing. We separated everything out.
I, I.
But if the city was still subsidizing L M U like they were, we wouldn't be having a bond issue. We'd have plenty of money. So when I first came in here, I looked at the, at the cash, I was like, man, we got a ton of money. This is gonna be great. And then all of a sudden, you take two million out of that picture and, and we're looking at the real number. That's when it, it changed in a heartbeat, you know? So, uh, we're still getting used to the cash flow with non-subsidies since it's in the economy. And that's the reason we're in the situation we're in right now.
But we're all trying to work to get the utility sustainable on its own.
Which is.
So they don't have to rely on.
Well.
And that's what a lot of people don't understand.
They don't.
You know what I mean? They don't. They just don't.
I'm like you though, Tommy. Back in the Gabbard administration, the word that I was always getting was all the infrastructure here in town was done. Water, sewer, electric, everything. But evidently, it wasn't done that way.
Well, but the, the other thing to think about there though, is your, your infrastructure's good for about, what, fifty years?
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's a time.
We're thirty years into that.
Yeah, yeah. Yep.
I mean.
Absolutely.
It seems like it couldn't be that long, but we're thirty years into that.
Yeah.
That's crazy. But anyway, that, just a, a thought for this project especially, we can maybe look at that, Mark, and, you know.
We can do something sooner than later. I, I just want to wait till.
No, no, no. I, and I agree with.
We got all, that way we can just close that fund. And when we close that fund, we can create an ordinance and basically say this is where it goes.
Yeah. I, I would. Me, I would rather use that money to pay this than to go into debt for it if we, if we can.
So if we're able to do that, for instance, when would the shovel hit the ground on that water main?
Um, we, we're ready to go out for bid. I, I, I say that, we had a meeting with the engineer. And I wasn't comfortable with the route that they took because of the utilities in the area. I, so we're gonna come back to you. They're gonna give us a proposal. We need to do a utility location. A, a serious utility location program through that. We had no idea. There, there's two sets of fiber that run through there. You've got the Aurora Sewer, you've got, uh, there's all kinds of stuff through there. So we're gonna come back to you for a engineering proposal. We wanna do more work on the front end of the engineering of this to pick the route. So we're gonna do locate, more pothole utilities and, you know, Texas Gas is in there. There's just a ton of stuff. And so when I reviewed those drawings, I was like, look, there's too many unknowns here. I don't wanna put this out for bid. And then us have to move a line because we've got a utility problem. So it's, it's much more, uh, cost effective to do the research on the front end versus the back end. So, uh, we still have probably another three months of utility location so that we can pick out a defined route for that.
Billy, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but this water main, uh, obviously could, could affect, uh, Tuscany Bay and Waterview, correct?
Yes.
Is that the?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Uh, I, I mean, I know, we're in an open session. I mean, it, uh. This, this particular, this project right here, I'm, I'm a hundred percent thinking, I mean, Billy's correct about it. This has to be done, right? We, I don't think we got an option on this one. This is a definite need, put it that way. But, uh, and Tommy's question, you know, hey, when can we start? You know, when can you possibly start this? I think the answer is, you know. And I don't, you guys, tell me if I'm wrong here, but I think we tell Billy, let's get this thing going. Uh, we've got the money to do it. If we have to, if you guys all choose to, hey, we're gonna take some of that three million. And we're gonna use it to pay for this project. This is the project that we're committing to. I'm okay with it from the city side. If, if you guys are, it, it's the USB and, and council.
Whatever we, you put in the motion.
I just think it's well spent money myself.
Does that line tie into Roar as well?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
With this new engineering that you're saying we're gonna have to have all the finer pipes and stuff, is that gonna, how much more is that gonna add to this project?
I don't know. But we'll have the proposal hopefully next week on that. So when we have our next USB meeting, I'll bring that in front of you to get the approval.
I, here's the way I would then do it. I wouldn't vote on it right now. I'd wait till you get the engineering.
Right.
Proposal. Group, group it in with the two point three.
Okay.
Okay? And let, you know, and then we do it in, in the next USB open meeting. We say, hey, we're gonna commit X, two point. Five million dollars of that, the fiber funds is gonna be committed to this project in order to keep from having to raise water rates. I think that's a good, that's a positive for everybody up here and a positive for you, I think. Mark, you.
Oh, I totally agree with that. Yes. I don't have a problem. Well, like I said.
I think that's a.
They're the ones that vote on how they wanna do it.
Well, I don't know if that's a positive for Billy or not. I mean, he's hitting us with two or three million dollars here. I don't know if that's a positive thing or not. I'm just kidding.
Come on, Larry.
Are you talking, are you talking, are you talking again?
I'm, yeah.
Hey.
Hey, Mayor.
Get off.
Hey, Mayor, I wouldn't even know what two million dollars look like, so that's.
You know, ju, ask Justin, he does.
I know. I know he does.
He gotta chuckle.
It's 'cause I look at all those checks that Mark has to write every.
Anyway, I mean, does that sound like a suggestion for going forward?
Yeah, sounds good. Good idea.
So that would be worth some more conversation, that's for sure. Moving forward with it, yes.
Alright, so let's take a look at the sewer. Um, actually, there's two big drivers on the sewer part of this. Um, one is the lift station consolidation up on Ludlow Hill. And then the second part is the sewer lining projects. Um, so let's talk about the sewer lining projects. Cause that's a little bit more cut and dry. Um. We, we know we've had problems with the clay sewer lines that are in there with infiltration. You know, over the years, you know, roots get in there and you get all kinds of water. Um, so we have a serious infiltration problem throughout. And, uh, what, one of the things that we'd like to do is to line those clay pipes. Uh, so that we stop that infiltration coming through. So it does two things. It extends the life of that clay pipe, which it's getting to the point where, you know, how long, how much longer will it last? Uh, uh, so we wanna extend the life of the pipe plus fix the infiltration problems. Uh, now, we, we looked at this and, and we have a, a schedule of all the pipes that are clay that need to be lined. And so we looked at it, we did some lining last year, uh, up on, up, uh, behind, uh, Saint Lawrence in that alleyway. So we had a cost per square foot, we based it based on that. And so we looked at everything. Looked at literary footage, how much it was gonna cost over the total of, of everything that needed to be done. And then we said, okay, um, what's the time span of this lining project? What do we want it to look like? Do we spread it out over five years, seven years, ten years? And my thinking was, if we're gonna bond the money, let's go get this thing done. So let's line this over a five-year period. So that's where the, the, uh, eight hundred and sixty thousand a year came from was, uh, that, that's all the things that, that, all the pipes that are clay. That need to be lined and it's in a five-year period. Now, if we needed to, we could always extend that. You can extend that out, you know, if you say, hey, eight sixty's too much. We'll get it down to five hundred a year. Uh, you know, we're just extending it out over a period of time. But, you know, I'm, I'm looking at this and say, I, I try to be as aggressive as fixing things as what we can afford to do. And so that's the reason we, we're coming to you on a five-year program. So questions?
This is a PVC lining that goes in the pipe or they pour a new pipe in?
Yeah, that, it's, it's PVC lining that goes in there. Um, we, we actually went up to Metropolitan Sewer District. Uh, and met with them, uh, to kind of get some ideas of, we was talking about, we wanted to see their skater system. Plus, we were talking about this lining project. And they told us of a couple of things that they're doing up there. So we're looking into that to see if we can lessen this cost, uh, when we do this. There, there's a couple of different, there are different options of lining. And then they have, it's called a pipe bursting, where you send the head through there and you bust the clay. And then you send new pipe back through. And that's, that's at a lesser cost point. It's a little bit more, you know, because you're busting that pipe, it's a little bit more destructive in the ground, but it doesn't cause any problems. They, they do a lot of pipe bursting up to, up in Cincinnati. So we are looking into options with this. This is something that we've not done i- in the past. So it's a new program for us. We're doing our homework just to make sure we make the right decisions on what to do.
What's the lifespan of the liner?
Um, so they're saying between fifty and a hundred years. So.
A PVC pipe. Is it the stuff where they put the mesh in and they, they put the pressurized PVC wood in it?
That's exactly what it is. They, they put like a, it's almost like a sock that goes in there. They put the epoxy around and then they blow it up and then it adheres to the lining of the pipe. That, that's the lining part of it. If you do the pipe bursting, they bust it and then you put the new pipe down in there.
Have we identified where the worst I N I issues are?
Uh, up on the hill is really hurting us. Um, you, you know, that's that eight-inch main that runs all the way down V L B to the hospital. You know, from Mount Horizon Way. And, and that's where it, it just, it tears us up. When, when we have heavy rains in a very short time, it'll, it'll actually fill that eight-inch up.
I guess that's part of what segues into the discussion of the lift station consolidation is that it, would it be to our advantage to line those on the hill first and kind of see the impact that it has on our current lift stations? Before we pursue the, the major consolidation project and say, hey, we pretty much solved this problem. Or maybe there's a lesser, um, project. We're looking at four and a half million dollars. Cause we're looking at four and a half million dollars for the lining, four and a half million dollars for the lift station consolidation. So.
Yeah.
We got ten million dollars anywhere else, Betty? We can grab?
We can't sell fiber, yeah.
Can we sell the mayor?
Yeah, he won't get much money.
Won't get that much money.
So, uh, that's a great point, Justin. Uh, the, the caveat there is those, so we have to do something with these lift stations. Either we have to rebuild them or they need to go away as part of the lift station consolidation. So a, a, a good chunk of that four and a half million is gonna have to be spent either rebuilding the existing or putting in, uh, you know, this, this consolidation.
Help me out again, Billy, and you may have told me these numbers, but, uh, when we were talking about this a few other times. But, uh, to rebuild a lift station, what kind, how much money are you talking? Is each one of them different? I said, are, are these individual lift stations right here?
Yeah, the, the rebuilds are, uh, like the one on, uh, Front Street, we had three hundred and sixty thousand. One on Lidle Drive was eighty thousand. So they, they do vary. Uh, the lift station, uh, under the Flyover Bridge is two hundred and sixty thousand. So some of these are, are more expensive than others. What we did, Andy and I, two years ago, we looked at. So two things with the lift station consolidation. These lift stations are a maintenance headache. So. And this was all Andy's thought. Uh, you know, there's a creek that runs behind, uh, Ludlow Hill Park. And Andy was up there. What, when those, when Butler and, uh.
Scenic?
Three Mile.
Oh, Three Mile.
Uh, lift stations, they'll, they'll get overburdened. And so there's times where we have to dump out over into the creek. Uh, because the, those lift stations just don't, don't cover all the, uh, stuff that's coming through there. And we have to report that to IDM each time it happens. And so Andy, I, I was like, how in the world did you come up with this project? And he's like, we was up there at Three Mile and we were dumping over the creek. And I said, why don't we just have sewer lines run through the creek? We can get away with the, do, do away with the lift stations. A genius idea, you know? Um, so to me, the lift station consolidation, i- it's not just taking care of the, the problem that we know we have capacity problem down V L B. It's also getting rid of a lot of lift stations and getting rid of a lot of the maintenance headaches and nightmares that we have, uh, associated with lift stations.
Well, the I N I issue is when we have an inch or two of rain, more so than it is on a daily basis.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
So everybody understands that. It's just, I, I, I'm working at the. So, everybody understands that, it's just, I, I, I'm working at the wastewater treatment plant, Roar hasn't so bad. Their average flow was five hundred thousand gallons. If they get an inch of rain, it goes to one point two million, like that. And it's I and I, you know, just seeping into the sewer line, so. But it's not an everyday occurrence.
So, some of that Three Mile Ridge overflow is I and I as well, right?
That's exactly what he's saying. That's why I'm trying to clarify there.
Exactly, so.
It's not during a regular day that it's overflowing.
Right.
It's when we have torrential downpour.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's, that's just kinda.
Well, we also, okay, we, we know we have a couple of problems at our lift stations, other than even rebuilding. For instance, the one up at the park on Bilby Road.
Why?
Is, is it too small?
That's the way I feel. Sounds like to me that when we added on further out Forty-Eight, letting everybody come in, no one took into consideration that our lift station wouldn't be big enough, so now we have an issue, you know, again, when there's I and I.
The holding tank on the.
Yeah, I mean, it's just.
So, a- and that's a great point, you know, with the mapping system now, I get to learn our system. And so, we have a ten-inch that's coming from Scenic into the Meyer lift station. It's eight-inch going from the Meyer lift station back towards the hospital.
And then it goes into what, twelve or something?
Fifteen, it goes into fifteen there at the hospital. So, the, the problem is that eight-inch that runs all along Bilby from the Meyer lift station to the hospital. That, that's the capacity issue that we're having. So, that along with Meyer is just not big enough to handle that infiltration when it comes in. So, that's when you get the backups into the house, when that can't keep up and we, we are not pumping it fast enough. So, you've got two issues. You've got Meyer that can't handle all the load coming from out past Scenic, you know, coming in, which that's from, that's Three Mile, that's Butler, that's Scenic, everything else out, out Bilby and say, route Forty-Eight, all of that's coming.
Anybody that's on Grunde.
Into Meyer lift station, yeah. So, you've got that problem.
Meyer lift station, you're talking about the one at the park?
That's the park, yes.
That's the park, okay.
Yeah.
But i- i- is Tommy's idea correct, that it's, it's not a large enough holding tank? What if you had a second? I don't know this stuff.
Yeah.
Wet well.
But now that you're saying that.
I'm just thinking out loud, if we had a second wet well, we could take a little bit more on for now, until we really, because, and I'm gonna back up here a little bit. When you brought this plan to me and said two point something, what did I tell everybody? Five million, and we're at four or five, so I figured it was gonna be that. So, my point is, is why, why couldn't we possibly look at maybe putting another wet well to buy us some time? And that would be, in my opinion, them just stacking your storm sewers to where it would make another wet well tied together. I, I'm, that's just my thoughts. No, I'm, I'm not an engineer.
It's got potential.
Well, so, that lift station needs to be rebuilt anyhow, so we had that emergency problem. We did an emergency repair, but we didn't fix the issue, so that needs to be rebuilt anyhow. So, if we decide to keep the lift stations, we'll rebuild it, and we'll put a bigger, and we may even put a second holding tank in there to do that. So, if we rebuild it, we're gonna have to put quite a bit of money into that, you know, just to make it large enough. But then, you still have the problem of the eight-inch going from there back to the hospital.
Too small, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's line those pipes first, like, let's do that yesterday, and then, then we find out how much I and I we're actually have, if we continue to have this problem. I mean, we know we have to rebuild the lift station at some point, but.
What do you, I, I'm confused over rebuilding the lift station. Are you saying there's pumps? Cause we just had TNT put all new pipe in there.
Yeah, so, they'll be able to reuse what they put in there, but the concrete's all laid up.
Okay, so it's concrete as well, I got you.
Yeah, so, the, the infrastructure of the lift station has to be rebuilt.
And a lot of that.
We should be able to reuse the pumps and a lot of the piping that they did.
Concrete erosion is normally caused by hydrogen sulfide gases, and that's where I say, when we put new piping in there, it shouldn't be open to the atmosphere, it should go down inside somehow to where it doesn't create the hydrogen sulfide. So, if we ever do look into that, I hope someone does look into that. They make pipes where they go down and it will shoot it down into the bottom instead of rolling over, now, like a waterfall effect, that's where you build up the gases, the hydrogen sulfide from the sewer, and it will corrupt, erode the concrete.
Okay, let me, let me, let me, let me try to get my.
Again, I'm not an engineer, but I've seen a lot of wastewater treatment.
Let me try to get my head around this. I, cause I, I, I'll be honest with you, I'm not a, and I'm not saying this is what we're doing here at all. I'm, I don't like to put Band-Aids on anything. I, I just had a meeting with our maintenance folks, you know, that's, it might been the way they did in the past. We're not doing it going forward, okay? But, but in this case, Billy, it, does it make sense to do what Justin's saying about getting those pipes lined, right?
With to do that, with to do that.
In con- in conjunction with it, we know we got a problem at the Meyer pump, or the Meyer lift station. In conjunction with what maybe Tommy's saying, talking to an engineer, and saying, hey, we got this capacity problem at the Meyer lift station that we know of, because of the, we know we got a, a problem with that eight, you know, an eight-inch line going all the way down Bilby, things like that. But if, if it's, if we can do this piece of the project, and, and at least, let's, let's see if we can correct the project or the problem at the Meyer lift station, which is capacity, it sounds like, in, in times of heavy rain events. Then, it's, the only problem I have with the sewer consolidation, cause it's, I don't think it's a proven entity yet. It's an idea that, that Andy came up with, and Andy's a very smart guy, and it probably will work, but it's a very expensive, which we talked about.
Right.
But, but I don't know if, if, if we can buy time and, and, and with.
So, there's, there's one thing that you gotta consider.
Yeah.
When, when that eight-inch was put in from the hospital out.
Okay.
It was put in at a time before any of that outside of.
Right.
You know, so, we've added on past Scenic, you know, actually Butler, Three Mile, Butler, none of that was even in the design for that.
Reddick, oh, I, I agree with, I, I understand that.
That eight-inch, so that eight-inch, we got two options. So, we're, there's a capacity issue. We fix the infiltration, we still have a capacity issue there. So, the, the two options that we looked at was to do the lift station consolidation, to take all that load from the park past.
Yeah.
That all gets redirected through this new pipe behind the park that ties into the fifteen-inch up to the hospital. That's one option, or the second option is to either install a new pipe or make the pipe bigger pulling out Bilby.
Do a ten or, or twelve-inch coming from Meyer.
So, you need, either way, we're gonna have to address that capacity issue on that eight-inch.
So, the sewer, sewer flows don't change though, that much from day to day, so I mean, right, like right now.
It's on high, high, high water events, right?
Right, but when we, if we solve the I and I, we just, we, we, we feel like we're putting a Band-Aid on it, we're actually just keeping the.
And I wouldn't say.
Stormwater out of the sewer.
I'm just saying that we need.
So, I mean.
I just don't think that that's addressing that eight-inch problem. I, I think, you know, we've added on, added on, added on, to the point where that eight-inch, you know, i- if it's not now, i- it is gonna struggle, you know?
And I will agree with you to an extent, but you can have VFD drives that will maintain a certain RPM to where it won't overpower that eight-inch.
Yeah.
It would only pump so much, and that goes back to having the extra capacity.
You gotta have the story.
With another wet well to allow that to happen.
Right.
You know, I mean, I, I know what you're saying.
Unless we put.
Again, I don't know why, we've all said this, why when people were saying, oh, yeah, bring them in, they wouldn't, weren't thinking about that then. You know what I mean? We're tying them in, the county said this, that, whatever. No one looked at the future of what our lift stations were gonna be when you bring in more capacity. I just don't get it.
So, we're, we're at the point where we need to make a decision.
We, yeah, we have to now.
No, but listen to me. Are we gonna replace the lift stations and leave them in place? Or are we gonna do this lift station consolidation?
From what else?
We're at the point where we've gotta do one or the other. You know, we gotta start rebuilding these lift stations, or we gotta get rid of them, do the consolidation.
If we rebuild them, how much are we talking there?
Well, you got it, you got them right here.
Well, the, the worst.
Oh, they're all together here?
Yeah, mine, three hundred thousand, or four hundred, whatever, you know, as prices go up. Well, the, the other thing we haven't talked about is potential future development there. I know that there's been opportunities for developers, even at the end of Scenic, you know, that would have wanted to do high pressure into one of our lift stations.
But you don't have to do that.
We don't have to, but is it worthwhile as this, we're growing, we're sitting on the rise, right, Mayor?
But then, then, when you take on, if, if you take on any of that, if you're just, you're just talking about expanding your utility geographic area, not your, not your, not any annexation.
No, I'm talking about like before Scenic on the right, that farm, say you build a subdivision, you know, because we need developments. We need more housing in our area, I mean, that's a huge need. People wanna live in Lawrenceburg, but if we added, you know, forty homes up there, then we have a capacity.
Well, I think they'd have their own substation, or their own lift station for the development.
Well, they'll have, they'll still have to pump, get into Meyer, get, get down the road, you know, we're still talking through that eight-inch, you know, bottleneck.
Right.
Even if they have their own lift station, which they will have.
Because quite honestly, there's not a lot of area for, for expansion. There's not. Unless, unless we expand our boundaries.
Yeah, we have to annex them, yeah.
And annexation is becoming harder and harder.
That's where you stated that before.
Yeah, but we're just kind of, we've been so stagnant with population growth, outside of the Flairdine Collins, brought a lot of new people in, but we wanna continue to grow as a city.
Well, we've, we've been approached by some prospects of, you know, out on Priville. You know, there's a lot of land out on Priville that could possibly be developed at some point in time. There's still, you know, once you get past Scenic, there's still quite a bit of land out there that can be developed. It would have been approached by a couple of people, nothing solid, you know, nothing's.
Well, but ultimately, all that would have to come, make its way to the Meyer at this point, the way it's designed, if they did their own lift stations. So, we built a hundred new homes in the development, so I mean, that's the consideration where we're talking about the capacity. We, we, we need to grow as a city, and, and that, that.
So, any, to me, any future growth off that eight-inch coming from the hospital out to Meyer, that, that's, that's my biggest concern right there, is that, that section of pipe, and, you know, it, so that's the reason I'm saying, eventually, it may not be now, but eventually, you're gonna have to replace that with a larger pipe.
Well, I think that supports your argument for the consolidation, to, to, for, for future development. I think that we need to consider that more and more, as, as we wanna continue to grow.
We, we looked at system-wide, where is our weaknesses? That, that's what I challenged Andy with, is show me where the weaknesses are in the system. And the first place he went was at the hospital out to Meyer, that eight-inch. That, that was his biggest concern, and he said, you know, you've got two options. You can make that line bigger, or you can take some of the relief off that, put another line in, you know, with the lift station consolidation. To me, I, I like the lift station consolidation, cause you're getting rid of a lot of the lift stations, you know? You're getting rid of that maintenance headache, that, that, that problem, so. That's, that's the reason I'm pushing too hard for the lift station consolidation. The, the other option is, we leave the lift stations in, we can either run another line on the opposite side of Bilby to have now, you know, we'd put a ten-inch if we did that, so you'd have a ten or an eight, or you could take and just replace that eight with a ten or twelve-inch and, you know, call.
So, eliminating them lift stations too, which you said that, and you've said this before, would be eliminating Butler's, won't be one there, Three Mile Ridge, Meyer, and what else?
Hardwood, that layer.
Them would be gone as well. Okay, yes, yes. So, there's about five.
There's five of them, yeah, that's it.
We have no reason to do skated, then.
Don't even get me started on skates, alarms.
It just reduces the cost of the skater. It reduces the cost of a lot of things by getting rid of those lift stations.
As you have backup pumps at this new pump station.
I think, I think everybody's just, I, I don't know. It's just, it's just a big number.
It's a scary big number.
I, I'm not opposed to it. Can we, I mean, as far as can, can we bump the lift station consolidation, kinda have this conversation, maybe Q1 of next year, and like, do the lining right now, let's see where our actual capacity is, you know, see? I mean, if we're, if we don't have all the I and I coming in, and we never have this issue again, would we be having this conversation? I mean, I understand, there is, there's eight-inch pipe, it's, it is a limiting factor if there's growth, but if we control all the I and I with the lining first, then let's have the conversation, hey, thinking about future development, or, hey, it's really close to the capacity, what this eight-inch can handle right now as it sits, we don't have any infiltration at all, then let's talk about, let's, let's pull the trigger on this consolidation. I just feel like there's, there's the big variable of how much water infiltration we have, because right now, it's everything's pumping fine, and it's not backing up, because there's no rain.
Yeah.
So, and yes, we have to repair that. Is that lift station need to be repaired right now, the Meyer? I mean, is it, I know you're, it's deteriorating, but it.
We don't, we don't wanna, we don't wanna have to go back to that same homeowner and say.
Oh, no.
I was gonna say, that, that, there's the problem.
We, there.
The problem is the infiltration, though, that's, that's the problem. We're solving that problem.
Well, eh, well, yeah.
Remember, solving the problem fixing that eight-inch, it's not gonna be big enough for us in a few years, did we?
So.
But again, it only happens when it rains, and if you do a different.
I don't think it would ever rain again.
VF drive, VFD drives are something where it doesn't in Russell's event. I mean, I understand what you guys are saying, but I understand what I'm thinking, and, you know, you got five years of eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars to reline pipes. What pipes are they? All, is that all the pipes throughout the city, or is this just the pipes on Ludlow Hill at four point three million dollars?
It's, it's mainly up on Ludlow Hill.
So, there's four point three million dollars worth of relining the pipes up there?
Yeah, they're all of.
Boy, we have really fallen behind the eight ball, haven't we?
Yeah.
Phew.
And it's all clay sewer main?
Yeah.
Well, here, I mean, no matter what you do with the consolidation piece or what, you're gonna have to do the lining at some point, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Well, you don't have, you can always take care of the inf, you can build your infrastructure and take care of the infiltration.
Right.
But that's not the right answer.
Right, I, I think the right answer is that the, the lining has, should happen.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? Why, why don't, and I, I know eight hundred and sixty is even, even a big number per year for doing this. I mean, but you, you said you could put it out over eight years instead of five, you could, you know, and that number comes down.
Right.
Right? I mean, I think you said at the beginning, Justin, I mean, why don't we try to do the, the lining and see how it helps our infiltration? I mean, we're gonna have to make some, you gotta make some leadway into that. I mean, you, just by lining, you know, the length of this building isn't gonna make any difference, but you know, you're gonna have to have some significant linear feat of lining before you notice a difference, right?
I mean, that kinda number, is it, would it be better just to put in brand-new sewer main everywhere?
No, it, it would double the price if, if not triple it, cause we did look at that, you know? This was by far the best route to go from cost standpoint. The, the only concern I have there, and the engineers are working on this, we're gonna share our mapping with them, with our mapping. I keep going back to this, this is a great investment, they told us it was a great investment.
Yeah.
They was like, now we can do load flow calculations based on what you have, cause we've got, you know, it, it shows them all the houses and where everything's at, and they can do load flow analysis. My, my concern is that, you know, I don't know that the lining's gonna take care of the problem for Butler and, and Three Mile and Meyer.
The infiltration, y'all think it's gonna?
I'm concerned about that. That, that's what's coming to mind, and, and, cause we've had to run over the hill on both Butler and Three Mile, probably four or five times since I've been here as utility director, so three years, four or five times.
Wow.
And Meyer's backed up into. And Meyer's backed up into that house twice, so, um, that, that really concerns me of holding off on this project, because I'm thinking at a minimum, we should at least put another holding tank in at Meyer.
I agree.
So the, e- e- either you gotta, you gotta do something.
Along with.
Really should have been doing something a long time ago. Here we go again, this administration's doing it.
But didn't it back up into that house?
It's aggravating, it's really aggravating.
Twice, but wasn't that during a rain period?
Yes.
Yeah, rain event.
Where, where?
What I'm saying is.
That's when you have your problem.
You can't fix that infiltration, last thing I wanna do is back up in his house.
Well, see, a check valve, put a check valve on. If we reline the pipe, then we're not gonna run as much water into it.
Right, but I don't think you can get there quick enough, Tony, that's the, that's the problem. You know, I, I think at a minimum, you need to put another holding tank in at Meyer.
Along with relining the pipe?
Yeah, yeah, at, at a minimum, I think we need to do that.
Where?
Three Mile and Butler, we can keep running over the hills, it's not the right thing to do, but we can keep doing that. But, you know, when you're starting to back up into people's houses like that.
Well, if we reline it and we put the other tank in, hopefully we don't have to do that, because we're cutting off a lot of the infiltr- trace water coming in.
Why are you saying that us relining it, we're not gonna cut off the infiltration at Three Mile?
We should cut.
Yeah, where, where is all this clay pipe that you're saying that we gotta redo?
Most of that, when you get up on the hill, I don't know the roads, I, I've been on them all my life, I don't know the names of them, but, you know, as you get past the hospital, those are all clay pipes. Uh, Randy, there's, there's a lot of all that stuff. I, I can send you the list of the relining project, you know, that, that Andy and Garrett worked on.
Are we talking clay pipe for the laterals going to the main, or are we talking about the mains being?
The mains.
The mains are clay.
Or clay tile? You're telling me that eight inch that's running on forty-eight is all clay tile?
No, that's PVC.
Okay.
But it's the, all the stuff in the subdivisions out past the hospital, those mains are all clay.
I got down in my main, in my cul-de-sac, cause I had a problem, and I know I got clay tile as a lateral.
Your, your subdivisions newer though.
Nineteen sixty-two.
Sixty-two?
Yeah.
But I, I can get you the list of all the.
I just can't.
I'd love to see those on a map, if you could show us.
Yeah, I guess, I'm, I'm hard time vision this.
I would love to see it on the map, kind of with colors, you know, to kinda say, hey, here's where the clay is, this is what we're talking about doing. That's just a million dollars a year for lining pipes that we're not gonna solve the problem, is kind of saying, we're not gonna solve the infiltration problem going to Three Mile.
Yeah.
I mean, why are we lining the pipes?
You know, the, the other thing we could do is to take the load off that eight inch, not do the lining, but do the consolidation. You know, that, that would take all of that flow past Meyer off that eight inch, and now the eight inch is a, a problem too, so.
But we're getting infiltration still.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, though, we gotta solve that, we need to solve that regardless, we don't want that infiltration, cause it costs us more money at the plant.
We have to treat it.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, we, we wanna solve the, the I and I problem.
For the gathering, well, who's the, do we have like an engineer that can look at this and say what?
Who, who, yeah, who's been looking? It's BFNS.
Like an expert in sewers, rather than all of us?
Yeah, cause I'm not an expert. I'm not an expert.
That'd be nice if you had like an.
I'll tell you right now, I'm not an expert.
But I, I think, I think, I think Billy wants to solve one issue. We gotta solve the, we, we gotta solve the capacity issue at, at Meyer.
Yeah.
Because we do not wanna back up this guy, we owe it to that guy just to even do that.
I don't know, I do not know why, I'm sorry, not to cut you off, but why do we not dig something up in his yard and put a check valve?
Yeah, so then it just moves to another house, that's, that's the reason, you know.
Let's put a tank in there then.
But let's, I, I think, I think the next.
Get a tank in and line it.
The next project that needs to be done is a, something to add to, add capacity at Meyer, to solve that problem.
What's, what's it gonna cost to put a ten inch on the other side of the street coming out of Meyer? Cause that would solve the capacity too, right?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, well, yeah.
But you gotta remember, it's not just putting pipe underground, you gotta have manholes, have it so many feet. It's a lot of work.
So we looked at it, and this has been two years ago, but it was more expensive to put a new line in, uh, and rebuild. So you got two considerations, if you put a new line in, you still have to rebuild all those lift stations. And it was more expensive to do that than it was to get rid of the lift stations and put the.
And do the consolidation.
What?
Do the consolidation.
For sake of time, why don't we, why don't we do this? Billy, won't you, BFNS is the company you're saying you're working with? I would have them put together a, a plan for the Meyer lift station to solve the capacity issue. What that's gonna look like, what it's gonna cost, right? Let's get that solved. And, and then, I would like to maybe have them in a meeting with this, and, and then they can ask their questions regarding, okay, the lining of the pipes, how much is it gonna help with infiltration compared to the consolidation project, you know, what? And then, then you guys can get all your answers.
So what we can do, I think it's a great point, you know, we can have them do the engineering to look at it from the hospital out. That's really what needs to be done, is to tell us, you know, here's what we have, here's all the customers we have, that they know what that flow is.
Yeah.
And, and they can analyze it and then tell us for a fact, you know, this is what.
What's it gonna take to fix it?
We can look at the infiltration, because we have all the reports from the river plant that'll tell us how much water we got coming in.
But I would have them look at the Meyer lift station first, especially, we don't wanna, we don't wanna back up in that guy's ass.
No, no, that's.
But that's not, I mean, my parents' basement flooded once a year, every year.
With sewer?
The eighties, yeah.
Mine did it one time, and that was June of twenty twenty-one.
This has happened twice in, in two years.
I was gonna say, that guy's place has been flooded. Come back into mine.
I'm just saying the overall lift station problem.
We can't put a check valve in there, you know.
You said it'll go somewhere.
But it's just gonna go up or else, so it just comes up, fixes the problem.
But are we having, are we having these engineers, are we saying, hey, we wanna consolidate all our lift stations, cause that was our idea? Can you design that, we wanna line the pipes, cause that was our idea, can you design that? Or are we going to an expert engineer and saying, look at all of our sewer on Ludlow Hill, what should we do? You're an expert.
I think that's where he's saying now, he's gonna go to BFNS.
Sounds like we're making up ideas.
Yeah, he's gonna go to BFNS and, and say, hey, what, we're, we got these problems, X, Y, and Z. And what, what can we do to fix that problem from the hospital out? Now, you, they'll, they'll know that we got an eight inch main going through there, we got X number of lift stations, and they should be able to come up with a, 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 what a scenario or how, how to fix a scenario.
Yeah.
They might have a whole new idea that we haven't thought.
Absolutely.
They, they can build a model of what, what our system looks like, you know?
Cause what if we lined some pipes and then we consolidate and take those?
Remember, uh, what's your name from Structure Point?
Cindy Ford.
Cindy Ford. I, I don't care what anybody thinks of Structure Point, I don't care what anybody thinks of any of those engineers. She was the best in the area, around, down here. She knew this area, Greendale Roar and Lawrenceburg, everything that, that needed to be done about, with, with sewer, water and sewer. And, uh, she's retired, um, so I don't know who to trust anymore, but, uh, I would say you get with, this is a company you, you guys like to work with, I would get with them and do what you said.
Yeah.
Show, tell us how we can fix this problem from the hospital out.
Yeah.
And, but I think we, the first thing that you need to get somebody to work on that lift station at Meyer.
Yeah.
And, and let's get that capacity fixed now. I, I don't, I, you don't wanna answer that guy anymore.
Right.
I know Abby doesn't.
Well, not just that, but I mean, if you have any add-ons up there, I mean, out that way, I know where he's talking about, that they're, they're talking about building a subdivision over there off Preble. And you're gonna have more houses and stuff, so we gotta be able to take care, we can fix it for what we've got, but if we have an add-on, then what are we gonna do?
Yeah, that's it, and they can look at all of that.
Engineers might say, we, you know, we're, we're using fifty thousand gallons an hour, and we got enough capacity to take a hundred thousand gallons an hour, but when it rains, we get two hundred thousand gallons an hour.
Exactly.
You know, so we might have way more capacity than we need, once we get that result from them.
Yeah. Yeah.
Even on the eight inch. But maybe Cindy would work as a consultant, Mary.
Yeah, bring her out of retirement.
Maybe Cindy would.
Yeah.
Like Michael Gordon.
Hire as a consultant.
I, I, I'll ask a question, because I, I'll tell you what, I don't think there's anybody any better than her.
When you find somebody like that, you just, they're golden, so.
Yeah.
And she worked on a lot, she worked on fifty for us, she does, she does a lot of knowledge.
She worked for the SDRSD too.
She came over and was the superintendent, cause she had class four when it got rid of the one system.
I remember, I remember. Somebody told me about it.
Hey, guys, not to kill the mood or ruin the fun we're having, but, um, we, we as the utility service board tonight are introducing what will be a, a city council ordinance, twenty twenty-three dash zero zero four. Um, and I sent it to you guys, but I want Billy to just kinda roll that out for us and, and explain what we're doing with the fire hydrants and the rates and the charges. This is a, this is, Billy, correct me if I'm wrong, these are new charges, a new way of, uh, using hydrants. So these don't replace any of our existing fire protection rates. This is a new rate and charge scheme for people being able to tap into fire hydrants and use the water.
So there is an existing, uh, fire hydrant, it, it's a, uh, water hydrant rig. So, and this is a water meter hydrant, where, you know, somebody like Fishel will tap into a fire hydrant. It's got a meter on it, so their tap has a meter, and then they'll pull water to fill a big tanker or something like that. And so that's, that's all we're doing is, we're establishing, actually changing the ordinance for the water meter hydrant, okay? Uh, two things that drove this, and normally, we would have waited until, uh, we redo the ordinances to take care of this all at one time. But this is a big enough thing that we decided to go ahead and do this as a separate, and what really drove this was we had to order two new water hydrant meters, and they were almost two thousand dollars each. And we looked at our deposit, and we decided that was not enough. And, uh, so the, the other thing that happens is part of the existing, uh, ordinance that's in place is the, whoever has that hydrant meter is, a lot of times they'll, they'll keep it, because they use it throughout the year. And each month, they're supposed to call in, to read off that meter, or bring it in so we can read it. And that's not happening either, so we're not able to fill properly for this. So two things we wanted to accomplish, one is increase the deposit amount, uh, so that, you know, it, I think I, I can't remember what the deposit was, but, uh, if somebody would have walked away with that meter, we were eating money right off the get-go. So we made that deposit high enough to cover the replacement cost of the, uh, hydrant meter. And then the second part of that is, uh, we made the penalty large enough to get their attention that if they don't call the meter reading in, then, uh, you know, we're, we're gonna collect pretty good money from, from that. So trying to change the habits, i- it, it's been a problem, it's been a, an ongoing problem for a while, to the point where I said, you know what? Let's just bite the bullet, let's do a, a, a new ordinance on this, and so I went to Crystal, and she wrote it, and then worked with Dell to, to get to this point.
It's pretty regular occurrence, people are tapping the hydrants?
Whenever you have demo or anything, they have to put water on stuff.
Yeah.
So they have to come in. If they're building something and they need water, they have to come in for that meter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that, there's a process in place that we have, uh, it's just the process was not being a, as optimal as it should, so.
Just puts a little more teeth into it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's exactly what we wanted to.
Yeah, I, I signed a claim at the sewer district for this there today.
What ordinance number is this?
It'll be for, we're introducing it as the utility service board, then there'll be a public hearing at the meeting on the fifth, and then city council will vote on it on the fifth.
What, it, so it has to be councils, not, I thought this was a utility board, don't they do ordinance?
Has to be council. Council has to do any ordinance.
Ordinance. For rates, for any rates.
Okay, okay, alright, gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're just doing a first reading?
Uh, not even that, we're just introducing.
He's just, yeah, this is just, this is informational purposes.
Yeah, we're, well, we're introducing it.
And Mary, you're right, when you did, when I did a different format.
You're gonna introduce it on the nineteenth?
It's different.
No, no, what you're saying, you're gonna introduce it on Monday?
No, we're, we're introducing it now, today.
Today, and then July fifth will be the meeting.
Don't worry, Mayor, we're not gonna vote to have a, um.
Coup.
Well, that gives me a lot of faith, he, he's one that answers his questions, I, he's answering his sentences, I don't, they're finishing.
I was hoping he was gonna finish it for him, but he did.
Alright.
Oh, cause we bumped our council meeting to Wednesday on July fifth?
Yeah, yeah, and we didn't like to put anything on the agenda Monday, for Monday's meeting, since Mary's gone. We're gonna make it easy on Tony.
Thank you. Good.
We can bring stuff up on unfinished business or old business.
We could, we can.
Yep.
I'm sure Mr. Let will.
Tony and Lenny. Is there anything else for today?
You can still vote.
Okay.
Good discussion.
Yeah.
Very good.
Alrighty.
Okay, um, entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting then.
I'll move your own.
Second?
Second.
These guys wanna stay.
I'll, 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 but I go second.
Pose, motion carried.